Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the January 9th, 2024 council meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
We have quorum present, and we can proceed with the meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and please join us in a prayer that I've asked our city manager, Hank Griffith, to lead us in, and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's see, y'all pray with me. Father God, we thank you for this day and for your love and for your blessings. Everything we have comes from you, and we thank you for tonight, especially for the blessing of giving us, getting us through the weather today. We thank you for the rain that it brought us. We thank you for lack of damage and protection of lives, and we just pray your continued protection as we deal with the strange weather of this time of the year and as we move into the spring and possibly have the occasion to deal with severe weather again. Father, I just thank you for everyone who's here tonight. I thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this group, to be about the business of the city of Milledgeville. And I just pray now, Father, that you will guide us in our actions tonight and that you'll watch over us as we head home after this meeting, and we ask this in your son's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have anyone that has signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
You've all received a copy of the December 12th, 2023 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adopt.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and second, I'll ask clerk to call roll, please. Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Don't have any comments tonight other than the mayor is feeling ill. She contacted me a little bit later this afternoon and asked to make sure I was going to be here. And we just hope she'll be feeling better quickly. Next, we have a proclamation, but I do not see our individual that we have that for, so I think for right now, we wouldn't just skip that. Bear with me for a moment. Okay, next we have a presentation. It's a proposal for adopting a public art ordinance. And Dr. Harlemann, not? We have. Okay.
Hello.
Hello. Just hand it off to GMC folks.
First, just wanted to say thank you so much for having us tonight and letting us be heard today. My name is Grace King.
I'm Renato Pinto.
And we are here today to present a report that we created as a part of our public policy class at Georgia College taught by Dr. Max Harlemann. And our report is titled "A Public Art Ordinance for Milledgeville: A Framework for Civic Expression."
Make sure some.
There we go.
So, in the research we have done in this class, we have seen how Georgia municipalities similar to our own have expanded their public art through adoptions of what are commonly known as public art ordinances. These policies help to establish a clear process for how to create public art within a community. We feel that there is a need for a public ordinance like this for two reasons. The first being that there is no proceeds for art on buildings owned by the city. The second being that there is no current policies to allow murals on buildings in the 10-block district. To show you this, we took this excerpt from the City of Milledgeville's Planning and Zoning Historic Preservation Commission Design Guidelines. And the current guidelines show that there is a restriction on any unpainted masonry to be painted on. This gives members of the community no opportunity to paint on unpainted masonry and prohibits new art to be installed in the 10-block historic district. This is an excellent opportunity for the City of Milledgeville to adopt a public art ordinance as there is significant research that shows the implementation of a public art approval process can increase the aesthetic, economic, and cultural value of a city. In terms of tourism and economic development, public art can boost local economies by attracting more visitors and tourists and businesses. It can also serve as a backdrop for community events, as we all know with the Deep Roots Music Festival. There is also significant research that shows blank or barren walls can prevent foot traffic from flowing down streets where businesses may be located. So by installing public art, we can increase foot traffic, thereby increasing commerce of local and small businesses downtown. Public art can also represent and celebrate the diversity of our community by representing our diverse cultures, our histories, and our different perspectives. And most importantly, there is significant research from several testimonials and case studies that we found that shows after the implementation of a public art approval process and the creation of public art in a city, residents report feeling stronger in their identity of a community and feeling as if they are more included, more valued, and more represented by their local government. So, we have presented a report to the city council that contains a public art ordinance for consideration for adoption. Through our research of other cities in Georgia and other states across the country with regards to public art and collaborating with seven leaders in our community, we have created an ordinance that will be discussed in more detail. But most importantly, the ordinance will not be asking city council for any funds. The net cost for taxpayers is exactly zero. So the primary action of our proposed public art ordinance is to create a commission under city council, and the commission would be called the Milledgeville Public Art Board. We have spoken with three representatives of the most important institutions regarding public art, those being Allied Arts, Visit Milledgeville, and Milledgeville Main Street. These institutions enthusiastically endorse the need for an ordinance and have representatives that are excited to serve as our three institutional members of the board. We are also recommending that two at-large members of the community be appointed to the board from city council members. And we want these voices to be heard and their opinions be heard that may not typically be held by members of our more formal civic institutions. And of course, all members would be appointed and approved by city council. It's important that our public art ordinance clearly defines what public art is and is not. The definition of our ordinance is as follows. Public art is a visually wholly non-commercial artistic expression intended and able to be viewed from a public way that meets the criteria specific, sorry, specified herein. Consistent with the purpose and intent of this section, the Milledgeville Public Art Board may approve a work of public art. Approval shall not be granted unless proposed artworks fall under one of these categories, which the first one being standalone, which include sculptures, structures, or temporary exhibits. The second one being applied, the most popular one, murals, building-mounted sculptures, and light exhibits. And the last one being digital media, performance art, and festival artwork like the Deep Roots mural right across the street. So we designed the ordinance to comply with all relevant laws and to promote the well-being and safety of our community members and its visitors. We have had several conversations with members of the community that are interested in installing public art, and the concern seems to be that the process for getting it approved is unclear. And we have written a streamlined approach that avoids the need for overlapping approvals, such as those from the Historic Preservation Commission and from planning and zoning, so that only one approval is needed to install public art. So the primary function of the Milledgeville Public Arts Board will be to review and approve public art applications from our community members. In our draft ordinance, we require the board to adopt implementation guidelines that will set both objective and subjective standards for the public art approval process. Our report contains a draft version of these implementation guidelines, but note that the board can review these and update them as they see fit. So as we have it now, we suggest that the board hold quarterly meetings or as needed, depending on the amount of applications they may have to review or any other business they might need to conduct. We suggest that the Public Arts Board create an email account to receive those submissions. And an application for public art will need to include an applicant's statement, either a statement of purpose or their own personal statement, a resume or portfolio that includes some other artwork that they may have done before, a design rendering for their intended project, and then a budget that will include all of the necessary components we've outlined in the ordinance and that we will talk about in just a second. The objective guidelines are to aim that the submission meets the mandated standards we have in the ordinance, namely, mainly, excuse me, that they will comply with state and local laws. So some other objective guidelines are that it falls under the definition of public art as we've set out, that it falls either within that 10-block historic district or on city property within the 10-block historic district, that the allotted budget is both sufficient to complete the project and that it could be completed in its timely manner, and that it meets several requirements, such as intellectual property laws, maybe traffic safety violation laws, or ADA compliance. The subjective guidelines that we have suggested for the ordinance are to intend that any art that may be, any art that may be put up, excuse me, is in the best interest of all members of the community. So some of the suggestions we have is that the art is non-commercial, that it's of professional quality, and it will improve the aesthetic nature of our downtown community, that it's non-political and also considerate of diversity and inclusivity, that it promotes tourism, thereby increasing foot traffic in downtown areas, of course, that it's family-friendly and creates an attractive or even interactive social space, and that it can be reasonably carried out in a timely manner. For both the objective and subjective guidelines, the board can determine whether the application meets them by a simple majority vote. So we have seen the problems in our own town which come from neglecting public art, whether it's chipped paint, building erosion, or even vandalism. And we wanted to make it a goal not to ignore the maintenance side of these potential future artworks. In order to do this, we propose adding an additional 10% to the proposed budget to allot for potential restoration that may be needed in the future. This money would be held by the Downtown Development Authority of Milledgeville with the idea that the original artist or a different entity could request this bond money to be released if the council sees the need for it. We also propose that the applicant budget out 5% towards potential unforeseen circumstances. We had the chance to hear from a representative from Macon, from the Macon Bibb Transportation Authority, who witnessed firsthand how a mural recently commissioned and painted by a Georgia College professor was washed away by rain and the paint had to be replaced and redone. Because there will always be some forms of challenges in any project that cannot always be accounted for, we feel that this sum of allocated money can help deal with those unforeseen circumstances. In order to help maintain a system that is continuously serving the community to its best of its ability, we suggest that each year the board should evaluate its progress by looking at three things. The first one being the number of applications received. The second, the number of applications approved. And the third, the number of applications that lead to successful art installations. Another approach which we would recommend is to monitor community satisfaction through the use of a QR code, which could be installed on or near the art installment itself and would be maintained by the board and referred to when community fed feedback is needed. We really appreciate the opportunity to present this draft and the time which you all took out of your day to listen to our work, which our whole class has worked on and we're extremely proud of it. We are hopeful that with your work and potential revisions, it will lead to a successful adoption in the coming months. We're happy to answer any questions you may have about the PowerPoint or anything mentioned in our report. Thank you.
Very good. Well-presented, well-prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions in council? Will make a comment. I've been doing this 23 years, and this is the first ordinance that I've read. Every word. Every word, all the way through. Even went back and looked at it a couple others. I tell you what, when I look at some of these things that Jimmy hands us.
What Councilman Chambers means is that we have an incredible amount of confidence in our legal review team.
I think that goes without saying. But I do, what I tried to come across with was that this was extremely interesting to me. And I think it's something that certainly would benefit our community. I've seen it happen time and time again. And it's one of those striking things when you go into a community and you see it, it pops, and you know it. And you feel something already, a connection to that community. Any, no questions, no comments?
None at this time.
Okay.
She had answered one of mine I had written down. And the question was, did we, did anyone, did anyone talk with Macon Bibb? And you came up and said that a little bit later on, so that was gonna be. Well, because I like, I followed, and I like the idea of also what they do. And I know that's difficult for us because of the state highways and having to get permission. But I do like their street art as well over in Macon Bibb and through some of the just travel areas, not necessarily where there's foot traffic, but just even passing through in your automobile. The street art that they have on the streets and the amount of time that people have spent doing that, it looks very good. So that was my question, and you answered it as part of your presentation. I do know that we'll have to, I saw some, as I read it a couple of weeks ago when you all gave it to us, I saw some conflicts that I know we'll have to sit down with Historic Preservation to iron out those differences so we won't have an all-out war. Not saying that we would.
Certainly want to be clear.
We want to be clear on those things. So there were a couple of things in there that I know that we're going to have to sit down and maybe have you all come in and let's iron those differences out and see if we can't work it and mesh it into this ordinance. But other than that, you know, if I don't have any questions, that says a whole lot. So it was a very good ordinance.
Overall, you all did a very good job. Very good. I am impressed.
And I commend you that a whole class did this. Just one thing for three of you or five people or whatever, sit down, but an entire class to go through it and be productive.
We couldn't have done it without Dr. Harlem.
I don't think we've had anybody that's actually wrote the ordinance and brought it to us.
And I was just about to say, at least in my tenure with the city, as city planner and then as city manager, I don't ever remember a group of students bringing us a draft ordinance.
I've been on there, I've been here 27 years, and I've never seen it. This is a new one.
This group and the fact that they not only put this kind of work into it, but they actually put the draft ordinance together.
Put the time in it, too.
So in my opinion, I think they all earned an A.
Man, I should have wrote some ordinance when I was in school, if that's what you did.
Thank you also very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
What night does the class meet or what time?
The class is already over. It was last semester. But we're, you know, more than happy to meet with you guys and more than happy to talk to Dr. Harlem throughout this next semester.
Dr. Harlem, you have their contact information.
I have their contact.
I do. I'm very interested.
I'd like to sit down and go through some things.
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're excited.
Thank y'all.
Okay, next we're gonna have some members of GMC staff come give us an update on some landscaping plans for the center of leadership.
All right.
And I guess that's you.
That's me. That's me. Good evening. My name is Alan Simmons. I am the Vice President of Institutional Development and Executive Director of the GMC Foundation. I was actually gonna ask the three ladies if they wanted to come give this because I know they did much better than I'm gonna do, so, but I'll try my best to follow up. So I do appreciate you all having us tonight and listening and seeing what's going on. I know it's, you know, being so close to downtown, everybody has ridden by and seen the progress over the last few years with the building and now the landscaping's starting. So we're extremely excited in, you know, in the foundation and in the school as well of what's going on. From the foundation standpoint, the foundation is doing the landscaping for the project. So not the school. It's the foundation. So I have a kind of a personal and really a heart for it and what's going on. And I've been driving by every day, checking it out, not really, you know, providing any assistance, just kind of looking and asking probably pretty obvious questions, but it's really exciting. We have Trey Grimes of Grimes Landscaping, who is a local business who's doing the landscaping and the hardscaping project, and he's doing a phenomenal job. It's amazing what he was able to get done over the Christmas break and over the, well, not really, well, over the Christmas break, but also in between students arriving, students leaving, students there during the day. You would never know. I mean, there's no disruption at all. It's really amazing. And that's, that's pretty special. You can find that with a contractor, and he's able to do that. So we are excited about that. Just to talk about the actual plans, you can see, the plan, it involves the entire area around the center of leadership, but it also carries across the street into Usery Hall, where we've done some updating. You know, it's hard to believe, but Usery Hall is 14, 15 years old. So it's, we've done some updating in the courtyard area, but we're also carrying the crosswalk and tying it all into the center of leadership. Crosswalk being one reason to make it safer for our kids to cross. They're going over there every period of the day, just about, from Usery Hall into the center of leadership. And that safety is, of course, our number one concern for our students. And if you've ridden by, you've seen that we've created a speed table in the circle area, the drop-off pickup area. Speed table is basically a speed hump that's, you know, they can cross. I didn't know what it was when somebody first told me. But it's safer. We've also already poured the walkway from that speed table across the grass area and up to the street now. So we're moving in the direction across Green Street over there to the center of leadership now. And it's just amazing, and I can't just thank everyone enough for the support and working with the team at GMC. But if you look, if you cross over to the center of leadership, you can see, of course, it's gonna have all-new shrubbery and, you know, sidewalks. And it's really gonna create that look from, if you're standing in the Usery Courtyard, you see straight into the front door of the center of leadership. Or if you're standing in the center of leadership, you're looking straight across into the Usery Courtyard. So it's tying it all together, making it more, I guess, appealing and, you know, in sync. We're creating that sidewalk. There is a sidewalk there, of course. It's been there for years, but that's coming up and being redone. City, we appreciate so much the work they did on that far, let's see, let me get this right, the southeast corner of where that brick wall was and the sidewalk there that was taken up and done. It was, I mean, seemed like it was overnight, a quick work. And just, it's all coming together, and you can tell it's a team effort. Now, one of the things I really want to focus on is the plaza. You can see on that, in the southwest corner of the plaza, which was Dr. Ritchie's old office, where that was. This is going to be amazing, what it's gonna create for the community, for the school, you know, everyone. The opportunities are really endless. I can't really talk about them because I really, there's so many that just come to mind. I'll be here all night of what can occur in this area. But it's absolutely amazing what it's gonna create. It's a lot of concrete, a lot of brickwork. We'll have walls in there. It's just a peaceful area. We see in the future, community events, you know, before shows, after shows, before speakers or after speakers, you know, using this plaza area. If you see here, this is kind of a rendering, well, it is a rendering, of what the back wall of the plaza will be. You can see the building next to it is the Carolyn, where our, you know, Global Online Leadership College is housed right now. And, but the wall is just, it's just gonna be, just make that area pop and create just a, you know, such a special place for not only school, but the community. Now, what I was talking about earlier, I guess I went a little backwards in the presentation, but you can see here how we came across with the crosswalk being moved into the area of Usery Hall and creating that straight line across. And, you know, you think, when you think about Usery and kids crossing, you think of high schoolers, but it's all the way middle schoolers, it's, you know, even elementary schoolers crossing that area for that safety reason. And we're, you know, I have a 12-year-old seventh grader, and she, she needs all the safety she can get going across there. She'll be the one, just keep walking and won't look. So we are extremely excited. The main thing is with Trey being, doing such a great job, the disruption is minimal, not only to our school day, but also the day, the, you know, traffic around the area. You know, no disruption to the city, or really, really anyone. And if there is something that, you know, we will do our best to make sure we communicate that with you guys and also with anybody that it would affect. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. So before I move on, just, I wanted to also give you a little update on the center of leadership itself and what's going on. But are there any questions about the landscaping project? If I don't know them, Jill Robbins is here to help me, so.
Let me just make an additional comment to Alan's information that he shared. Really, the only two things that they have asked for during this project is the permission to move the sidewalk, and of course, a new sidewalk, which was a no-brainer, and to not use the parking on Green Street between Elbert and Jefferson on the north side while this project was going on. That's really the only two things they've asked for. And those were very easy to deal with, very easy to handle. And as Alan said, they really and truly are doing it with very little disruption, and they are communicating. I went to a meeting with the entire team in early December over in their physical plant building that most of us remember going to get shots in. So when I walked in, I wondered where the smell of alcohol was. But they have just been communicating what's going on and even making sure if they were not quite sure that it was okay to do something. I don't want to say getting permission, but just simply saying, we're planning to do this. Is that okay? So I'm excited about what it's gonna look like. We've had a little bit of discussion about the potential to come back later on and do a speed table as part of the crosswalk, and that's a conversation I'll have to have with both GMC and with y'all when that time comes. But I'm excited about what it's gonna look like and really excited about the plaza. I can't envision the plaza yet, so I'm gonna be excited to see it up and constructed, to understand exactly the type of space that's there and what the potential. constructed, to understand exactly the type of space that's there and what the potential is to use it, so I'm excited about the way it's headed.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
The rain didn't wash it away today, did it?
No, and not, not that I noticed, but it is wet over there, so I don't know, it's gonna take a couple days where they can, I mean, I guess it's easier to dig now, so it's all, it's all wet, but, no, I, and Hank, I really appreciate that about, you know, the speed table across Green Street, we talked about, while it would be the greatest thing ever, keep, you know, even for safety, but we understand it's not, you know, it's, there's a lot more to it than, so, it's, but, you know, just, real briefly, just wanna talk about the center, most of you have had the opportunity to go and see the inside, it's absolutely amazing. We have had events in there so far, we've had VaCTIV, which is a community event, you know, anybody could purchase tickets to it before Christmas. If you didn't, when they come next year, you need to go, it was great. You know, we've, we've had our, we've had some, our One Act Play, we, upcoming this year, we have our High School Musical, the Addams Family, our high school, yeah, High School Show, The Addams Family, later in the spring. We have middle schools doing SpongeBob into this month, and then next month, elementary schools doing Seussical the Musical. So, it's, if you've seen the elementary school, and I like to talk about the elementary school, that was my previous role, it's amazing what they do. We are, even though we are, we are operating the building and having classes, having events in there, it is technically, we have not had our grand opening, and we are working on when we're gonna have our grand opening and tying it into our Leadership Speaker Series, and we are working on securing a speaker, we're in talks now. Once that speaker is secured, we will, of course, let everyone know and, and, you know, get that word out and when the actual grand opening will, will be, so more to follow on that. Our Fine Arts Director, Fine Arts Director Mark Weaver is working, trying to come up with ideas for four more community events that we can have in the building, and, you know, and how we're gonna work that, and we've talked before, and the building is great, it's super nice, but it's also cost us money, so, you know, that's part of the whole talks we're having as, as GMC and then outside entities coming in, is what that cost will be to help support it, because we all know that it's always nice when you first turn the key, but every day you're in there, it's something else needs to be fixed or operated, and so it takes, it takes those funds. Some of the major events that are coming, end of February, we have the Junior Thesbian Conference, which is a huge event from schools all over the state, that's middle schoolers will come in. State Literary is end of March, we have the 82nd Airborne, March or April, we're not sure, we haven't nailed down that day, but if you've not seen them, they're absolutely amazing, you need to come see them as well. This is the 82nd Airborne All-American Chorus out of, you know, North Carolina, and then they were also top 10 on America's Got Talent, so they are awesome. They, my 12-year-old that I talked about earlier, she's the one that she goes around sings the, you know, if you've heard the song, it's Here We Go, and they're talking about they're going, you know, jumping out of the C-130, and so you need to, you need to Google it or YouTube, it's good. And then rounding out in April, we have a Broadway star coming in doing a Performing Arts Series concert as Capadia Jenkins. I mean, it's, it's amazing, we're have, we have a Broadway star from New York coming to Milledgeville, Georgia, to, you know, to provide, you know, performance for our community, so. All of these events, I mean, it's gonna bring in hundreds, if not thousands, of people, especially the Junior Thesbian and State Literary. Kids are gonna come in early, stay, parents eat downtown, so it's just, it's great what this center, the landscaping, the plaza, everything ties in together and what we're, what's gonna happen, the future is bright for the community and GMC, so we're excited. All right, any questions?
I appreciate the emails that General Carwell always sends to us, we kinda know what's going on. We've never had that before, but we've been doing it.
Sure. Yes, and we, we want everybody to be informed, if there's ever anything I can, you know, help with, just, I'm easy to find, so just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Wayne Johnson with us, and he's the Emergency Management Director, and I'm sure he can give us a word or two about what all went on today.
It looks all good.
I think he's got a box over there for us, too.
I do. After the two previous presentations, I started just walking out. Leave the boxes sitting here. Hopefully, everybody's power's back on by now, if not, they're working on it. Last time I checked, there were still seven, close to 800 customers without power, that includes Geordi Power and both EMCs. I usually don't look at specifics separate, I just look at numbers as a whole, but that was the last time I checked. Had a little glitch in the notification system today from Geordi Power, we didn't know they was opening floodgates, kinda discovered that accidentally after the fact, so by the time I got in touch with someone in Atlanta, they finally got it worked out. Nobody was getting them, I wasn't getting them, PDs, 911, they changed notification systems and all information didn't get uploaded into the new program, so I was told, but hopefully that's straightened out by now. We do have three gates open right now.
Probably more to come.
Probably. I was just reading the flood watch, a warning has been extended until Friday at 4:00 PM. I guess it depends on, I shouldn't say this, how you define major, but I don't think we had any major damages in the city or county today.
That's good.
Other than that, I'm gonna touch bases with Public Works when I leave here and make sure there's no road closing, city and county, and then I'll get with Doc Price later on tonight and update her on what's going on, so they can make a decision about schools tomorrow. I don't foresee them closing schools tomorrow. With the exception of some of the roads are flooded due to the floodgates being open, that I don't know yet. But other than that, everything went as good as it could go. Now, about the boxes here, last year, I believe it was early last year, I found out that GMA had some excess funds from a previous disaster, hazard mitigation funds, and weather radios was one of the things we could apply for. So, I applied for them and received them, they had to be placed in city, county, critical facilities. With that being said, I've already put some in all the police departments and all the fire departments, city-county-wide, hospital, couple of nursing homes, I got a lot more to do. But after briefly talking with Hank about it, he said he needed 10 for several places, and he told me today he may need a few more, which is no problem. But with that being said, I'm here to present y'all with these weather radios tonight.
Where do you want me to sell them? You can just put them right there on the edge of the...
Right here?
Yes, sir.
Batteries for all of them are in this top box.
Okay, great. They would've been extremely beneficial today.
Hank, you'll have to keep one in your office.
I'll say, y'all might not have had to hear from me so much.
Well, you did pretty good.
You sure did.
And, and I'll just tell you, the reason I know what I know is because of communicating with Wayne all day long during a situation like this. Jackie Hugley was giving me a hard time yesterday, she said, she sent us an email saying, "Here's what the National Weather Service says, but here's what you think is gonna happen." And Wayne and I get on the phone a lot and talk about what we think is gonna happen, because sometimes we really have to funnel it down to what's gonna happen in Milledgeville and Baltimore County, and Wayne is, is very easy to do that with, and, and I appreciate his work countywide. We actually will be coming to you all on the 24th to renew the hazardous mitigation plan.
No, that is to update the State Mutual Aid Agreement.
Mutual Aid Agreement, thank you. And that's extremely important, obviously, as we, as we, as the city and county continue to work together in emergency situations like this. It worked very well in April during the tornado, it worked very well today, and I anticipate it'll work very well each time that, that we need to, to put it into place, and, and I appreciate Wayne's help in that. Unfortunately, he and I both were sick and didn't get to go to the National Weather Service meeting in Atlanta back in December, and we were both like five-year-olds, all excited about going, but we did not get to go, but maybe we'll have that opportunity again, so. Thank you for what you do for us, Wayne, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may we have permission that the City Council can come out and take a picture with Mr. Johnson?
With the radio, yes, yeah.
I don't see that written on here.
If I didn't come for her, I'd have to come for you, so I just wanna take off, Jimmy.
I'm gonna get down here to them.
Yeah, y'all just get close together.
Well, now, I like that, but I just...
No, you done it first time.
What makes you think his application didn't end already?
Probably not a bad idea to back up plan, right?
I teased them, we're gonna have us a weather station up on the roof before long.
Why not?
Also great, too.
I bet somebody over at George College is taking one up there for us.
Oh, I'm sure he will. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Got about... I'm waiting with bated breath.
See how many minutes you got before you're reporting.
That'll teach me to put three presentations on again.
Who's got the clock?
I'm on it.
Unfortunately for y'all, I do.
Thank you.
The agenda for the night is pretty straightforward, so it doesn't require very much explanation. I do want to start out by introducing Stacy Bass. Stacy is our new HR Coordinator. Stacy served as a temporary worker for us in planning and zoning and in HR previously, and was one of the top two picks that the committee passed on to me to interview for the coordinator position, and I reported to you all in, I think it was my report right before Christmas, that we had offered Stacy the position, and she accepted, and we're happy to have her. She is located on the first floor of the Economic Development Center next door. If you remember, we changed that job description around a little bit so that the person in HR coordinator role was serving as the welcoming agent in that building next door, and we're happy to have her, and we fully anticipate, we may call her over here sometimes when we get short-staffed over here, and she's actually already done that even when she was working as a temporary employee, so we're glad you're here, Stacy, and, and you wanna say anything to council? Great, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
The only item that, on the agenda that I want to mention and share a little more information on is Ordinance O-240102, that's the ordinance calling for a budget amendment for the library. As you all know, this is the second budget amendment for the library for this year, the previous one dealt with personnel costs. They are actually part of the State Health Benefit Plan Program, because those folks who are full-time over there are part of the state teacher retirement system, because they are considered part of the university system employees, and that State Health Benefit Plan insurance increased this year, we actually, and I received that, too, because that's still insurance I'm on, we received a notification that it would be increasing each year for the next three years, and the part that is necessary for the increase for this year is the figure for the budget amendment that you have for this ordinance. I've had a conversation with library staff and the library, regional library director, and I'll just put it the way I put it to her, we can't guarantee this increase every year, we'll deal with it at budget time coming up when we start working on that process, so they need to be talking to their board about how it might be able to be handled in the future, and you can see that they actually did that this time with changing some of their positions from full-time to part-time, which according to her, they're able to do based on the fact that there are a fair number of students, college students in town, who are interested in part-time employment, but that will take us, that will take them through this 24 calendar year, and this is the city's part, the county's part, it's a little more than double what's in the budget amendment for them, and that's where that's come from. We can certainly have more discussion about that when it comes up for your vote, but I would like to ask that, if possible, that rules could be waived tonight to vote on that ordinance on the first read. The only other thing I want to share with you is, we, back before Christmas, we scheduled a called work session for 5:30 on January 16th, which is a week from tonight. I shared with you that this would be a planning update and discussion for issues or projects or things that we wanted to look at doing for 2024, to add them to our three-year work plan that we put together last year. I also had scheduled Jim Elliott to come speak with us, to share some information about some things that he did when he was city attorney in the city of One Robbins. He actually emailed me today, he is the city attorney in Cochrane, and he emailed me today and said that Dodge County Commission had called a called meeting to discuss SLOSS for next week. I won't tell you what he said in the email about cities and counties getting along on SLOSS, but he said, he said, "I have to attend the meeting," and I told him I certainly understood that, that we were, we were infringing on his schedule, and we appreciated him being willing to come. So, what I'd like to do is, if possible, is to keep our scheduled called work session for the 16th. Without Jim coming, that may enable us to get out a little bit quicker, and then have another called work session on, we have five Tuesdays this month, on January 30th, which is the fifth Tuesday, to then hear from Jim and then wrap up anything that we may have left hanging on the 16th, as far as our planning meeting goes. far as our planning meeting goes. So.
What time are, what time are you looking at?
Both of them will be at 5:30. And we will, we will have, uh, we will provide supper or dinner at both of those meetings.
Oh, okay. 5:30.
Um, unless you have questions for me, that's all I have.
Six minutes.
I think we better go ahead and adjourn. Okay. We don't have any, um, old business for the evening, so we're going to go ahead and move right on to new business. I'm going to ask clerk, please read Ordinance 02401-01.
Conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the land development code to allow the overlay for a special use of property located at 701 North Jefferson Street. This property is currently owned by Nanya L. in Zone CC. The applicant desires a special use for a car lot of 12 vehicles for this property.
Thank you, sir. This is the first read and this will be assigned to Planning and Zoning Commission. Next, I'll ask clerk to read Ordinance O-2401-02 as the first read.
An ordinance to amend the 2023-2024 fiscal year annual operating budget allocation to the Mary Vincent Memorial Library.
Okay. Since this is time-sensitive situation, entertain a motion to suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance with one reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. I'll ask clerk to call roll on suspending the rules.
Dr. Lee?
Hi.
Ms. Shinholster?
Hi.
Ms. Map?
Hi.
Ms. Walden?
Hi.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye. Okay. I've asked for a, uh, motion in a second on the ordinance.
Move, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chambers, I'd like to just make a point that, um, the body of the ordinance says 2022-2023 annual operating budget. That should be 2023-2024. Uh, that's my fault. I gave it to bow that way. So we'll get that changed. Tell me where? In the, in the first paragraph of the ordinance. 2023.
23 and 24.
I'll make that change.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye. Okay. The budget amendment is adopted. I'll ask clerk, please read Resolution R-2401-01 by caption.
To authorize a sales lease agreement with Superior Document Solutions for the lease and maintenance of a copier in the water, in the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
No move. Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask clerk to call roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye. Resolution is adopted. Okay, I ask the clerk, please read Resolution R-2401-02.
To authorize a sales lease agreement with Superior Document Solutions for the lease and maintenance of a copier in the water treatment plant.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have, I do have a question. I should have asked it with the first one. Superior Document Solutions, is that like, were they formerly someone else?
No, they, they are, um, they are a new company that was started by, um, an individual that was with Georgia Duplicating Products, Products.
Cause I recognize Scott's name.
Yeah, yeah. We, and we, uh, we have not gotten service with Georgia Duplicating Projects since Scott left.
I know.
And that's the reason we.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, when these leases came up for renewal, um, we, we chose to go with him mainly for that reason.
Good for him.
He even came over and worked on Georgia Duplicating Projects machine one time when he was not, he probably was not supposed to, but. Right.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll ask clerk to call roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye. Resolution is adopted. We have one new alcohol license, an application to consider. I'll ask the clerk to present a license, please, an application.
This is for Douglas Swami on behalf of Douglas 23 Incorporated, doing business as Family Corner, located at 191 West Andrews Street. And this is for beer retail package to go.
Okay, you've heard the application. Is there a motion to approve?
Move, we approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I'm going to be quiet one of these minutes. This, this, my question has nothing to do with this particular license. But, you know, I, I just, and, and it's more of a statement than a, than I guess a question because we, we, we're having so many of these. And it seems like the city is saturated.
This is actually a new owner. This one was already there.
I know that. I know where this one is. It's the one that had to sign down forever.
And that's, um, that's a conversation I'm planning to have with y'all on the 16th.
Thank you. I'm concerned about whether we're just going to be alcohol licenses and not, you know, businesses. I'm, I'm, you know, it's just, I'm like Dr. Lee now. It's starting to bother me because, um.
Two minutes.
And I'm, I'm just curious to know how big county, um, is that something we should discuss?
We, we will, um, Mr. Jordan and I have already talked about the potential for a moratorium, uh, for the purposes of recrafting our alcohol orders. That, that would be, that will be the, the major point of our discussion on the 16th.
Right. Cause I, it just, it just seems like to me, and it's me personally, it just seems like just meeting after meeting after meeting. You know, we, we, you know, we would go for periods of time where we didn't have any and we just did renewals and, and renewals. And then now it's just like, mom and dad springing up everywhere. So that, that's my concern. It's a community concern too, not just mine.
Well, if you all remember when we were talking about the budget, I mentioned that we needed to look at redoing alcohol orders anyway in terms of fees. So we can do all of this at, at one time and, and possibly put a moratorium on, uh, any new ones while that's going on.
It concerns me.
I think normally in business, uh, you have a survival, uh, finished more or less. And, uh, but sometimes you have to wonder, you know, how, how do some of these businesses continue? And, uh, with, with so many.
Well, you know, and it concerns me that, that they're, they're borderline and, and disenfranchised community areas. And it's really a concern.
Sounds good that we're having a discussion. Okay. Uh, any other questions or comments? Yeah, I'll ask clerk to call roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye. The license is approved. We don't have any appointments to make. Is there a, uh, reason for us to go into closed session?
I have nothing.
No. Do you have anything?
Okay.
That includes the items on the agenda. Anyone on council other than Ms. Shinholster have any? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.